Oh, cute. Okay. Right? Yep. Call up the, yeah, it's a different meeting then, probably call. Okay, call up the agenda, because I'm going right off the agenda and that's how I'm getting it. Well, you have to use the numbers that are on the agenda for this particular meeting. It changes, it changes each time.
Hello, are you?
Ben, how are you?
Good, so?
Thank you, you?
Good. Okay, you do me a favor and call Stephanie, because she can ask us it, I can't. Steph, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you, sorry, I was on mute.
Okay, just want to make sure you can hear us, okay?
Yep.
Because we got kicked out, we got kicked out.
No, I, no, I'll let you back in.
Okay.
So, are we about ready?
Yep, all of us, I just not turned on. You can go ahead and start.
Okay, call the meeting to order. Uh, call the committee as a whole to order. Uh, the gubernatorial disaster proclamation executive order twenty, uh, twenty oh seven, executive order in response to COVID nineteen, COVID nineteen executive order number five, as amended by executive order twenty twenty dash thirty-three, executive order in response to COVID nineteen, COVID nineteen executive order number thirty-one, and as reissued and extended by executive order twenty thirty, twenty twenty thirty-nine, executive order in response to COVID nineteen, COVID nineteen executive order number thirty-seven. Uh, the open meeting act, uh, five I L E S, one twenty slash two, and one twenty slash seven, suspension of public body physically present and limiting repose, remote participation. I, Dave Brand, as president pro tem of the Board of Trustees, McHenry County Conservation District, has determined that it's not practical or prudent to hold public meeting is, uh, of the Board of Trustees for July sixteenth, twenty twenty, in person due to the current pandemic, P A one oh one oh six four zero. So, call to order, please, that's me, and then roll call, please.
Trustee Cook?
Here.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Henning?
Yes.
Trustee versus absent, trustee Campbell?
Here.
And trustee Brand?
Yes, here.
We have a quorum.
We don't have any remote, uh, participation. Um, uh, there's one thing I'd like to add, um, to, uh, utter, uh, is the, uh, monthly cop report, uh, monthly cop report, I'd like to discuss that real briefly. Uh, so, uh, how about pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, do we have any public comments? I will wait.
So, um, they need to be instructed that they need to raise their hands.
Oh, oh, public comments, if you're interested in making a public comment, please raise your hands so we can see you, uh, do we see everybody on there?
No, um, Stephanie is monitoring it.
Okay. Anybody wish to speak at all?
Anomaly is raised.
Okay, good deal, thank you, uh, so new business, uh, five point one, review of July twenty first, twenty twenty, regular meeting agenda item. Is there anything at all y'all would like to discuss?
For those of you at home there looking at the agenda, we have been sure.
I have nothing.
And you said it was a large packet this month, with a lot of donations, a lot of readings.
Yes, it was. Well, here, I do have a minor question, I have no problem with content, but on thirteen A, the debt, is certificate issuance. Normally, we see, I move to approve, but I don't see those words, it just says, ordinance twenty nine nine eight, uh, should we add motion to approve? Like, uh, number twelve, thirteen C, thirteen two C, uh, we have resolution to execute a contract, I get that, so, uh, do we read those, to get that into the business, do we just read what's there?
Yeah, so, those are, um, many a time when it's been other board citizens, we haven't placed the ordinance on the public meeting, because you're still determining it, so we had a discussion on that and finance, and of course, to post that, so you would just, whoever moved it, would move to pass?
Okay.
Ordinance, um, and that would be done.
The ordinance or the resolution?
Or the resolution.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Have to admit, I haven't got to read that, at least on, with, uh, with the rich property owners, is there anything that I need to know about that one before?
Well, there's going to be a presentation on, uh, next Tuesday, so you'll?
I'll get, uh?
You'll get up to speed on that.
I plan on reading it before then, but...
Yeah, so do read that, um, that and the, uh, Illinois Nature Conservation Commission will have our private presence to present those two items, um, there's no actual be required on those, so just a discussion.
Okay.
So, I do have a question, and it, uh, it came up at the finance meeting, and I kept my mouth shut, and why is, uh, thirteen thirty three A? Why are we retroactive salary adjustment effective April first, two thousand nineteen? What is the reasoning for that?
Okay, terrific, and, and, uh, if I didn't cover it, or, I know we had a lot of information on Tuesday, so, um, in, in brief, uh, the comprehensive report that was done by Gov H R was done spring of twenty nineteen, um, we approved, the board accepted, and we made all the adjustments to the study at that time, effective April first, twenty nineteen, for all the other positions that were changed. Um, in, uh, July, that is when we received communication from the ecologists, actually they had expressed concern in March, before the study was being completed, just about being approved, it was being looked to, but we held, they held on until the study was complete. Um, in July, it was brought forward to the board during the finance committee meeting, uh, that there was a concern about that, and that we would look into that, and, uh, we didn't go forward to do an internal equity study. Um, obviously, we started looking, they went back, they researched it, the ecologists looked at it, um, the, uh, natural director of plant preservation, natural resources, uh, went in and reviewed the positions specifically, um, so, to be fair and equitable, um, to penalize, I guess, so to speak, if we were looking and we found that there was anomaly, if we are to consider that the Lake County is a considerable comp, and it's a hybrid of their level one and level two, then, to be fair and ethical, we would go back to the same time period that we did everybody else who made the adjustments. Otherwise, that would be the, um, you know, I, I think, or just a fair way to review that, you know, without stuff, make it retroactive April first.
Okay, I don't have to agree with it, right?
Absolutely not, retroactivity, you know, again, we look at things not, every request that comes forward for review gets moved forward with, uh, an approval, um, it goes through an assessment, through H R, through our director of finance, and then to me, and, uh, the director of plant preservation and natural resources, and I very much take Ed's, you know, role in reviewing his team and their job duties, um, and then the administration of finance and H R takes a look at it from, how does it measure as far as the weighting and scoring, and then we look towards the efficacy, right? So, it's a, if the board should choose that you disagree, giving it the position, first of all, this is the position graded to move up, we believe it is.
Sure, but I, I have nothing against that, nothing.
Yes, graded to a twenty one, we felt twenty one exceeded where it belongs, because of, we have other positions, and without an internal equity study, you know, you'll get a bunch of, uh, positions on top of one another, so, so that's first and foremost, and then from there, it is a retroactivity, and that's how.
But you're taking it back to when they originally made the request that they, they were being treated unfairly.
Not their request, it was the date that the study was accepted by the board for all the other positions, but we had other positions in that study.
Oh, they did, who else had adjusted?
The adjustments came back, and all the adjustments were made effective on that date.
Gotcha.
And why is, why was that, why were their, their salaries not adjusted at that time?
It's horrible.
Because she, well, well, the, each physician, every physician of the district is not a benchmark in the study.
That just scared me, I don't know why.
So, of all the positions that we have, there are multiple positions, if you look at our classification system, we have three schedules, within those three schedules, there are multiple positions in a grade, they look at one, we, we determine which physicians are going to be benchmarked out of that, we do a sampling, and those go out, um, they do the study, and they come back. Um, in the ecologist position, which the study shows, they had three comps that they used, the park district, who was used, every other, every other work group in the district was benchmarked with a larger set, right, for the park district, the ecologist didn't have comps, with the exception of Lake County, DuPage, and Kane County, okay? Those were also used for the other positions in the agency.
Okay.
Um, so, they felt very, where they were when the scoring came back, to say something was wrong, and when they were concerned, how could we bench, benchmark the park districts, the park districts don't have this position, so that was the first area. Then we had to go look into the other positions, and so, it is not up to us, uh, initially, to go back in and look at how the response of the study is done, because of the, the job description, all of the information goes out to the agencies filling out their reports, we do many for studies that come in, Jenny fills those out, and that was what we see, and they ended up filling out, and they tell me the level one, okay, they, they interpreted it as a level one, that's where Ed and the team said, wait a minute, not so fast, it's not a level one, and, um, we're more like the level two, and we ended up, it's a hybrid, we're in between. Ed's online, Ed, do you want to speak anything in that, in regards to your thoughts on the retroactivity?
There's a delay. I had to, I had to get unmuted there. I would reiterate that, uh, the restoration ecologist, the wildlife ecologist, and the plant ecologist, all of them are in this group, and all of them asked for the review, um, did so, yeah, immediately upon the time the study was completed, so, I very much feel that had that request come in a year later, uh, it would be a different situation, but, um, they asked for the review immediately upon the completion of the Gov H R study, and they had concerns about it as it went through the board, so, I very much feel that, uh, it's, it's a fair situation to look at it from a retroactivity situation.
And if I'm not mistaken, this is brought up to us in a finance committee meeting in July.
That's where I was here, so...
Right, it was, no, that come out, right, yeah, I was listening about that, I just meant, I'm sorry.
You're still last July.
Last July, so that as the rest of us who were here, just a reminder that we had, they, he had brought it up, so, he is right, as they kind of got on it right away, and it reminded me that I thought we had talked about it before, um, and so I think, yeah, I think it just kind of gets the fact that, um, everyone else was jumped at that time, and so, and I think, I don't remember, we just, we asked to move not to deal with it at that time, I mean, we, we, I, and it just kind of got, so that gave them time to look into it further, and we weren't ready to make the decision at that time.
I don't recall.
The minutes was, you know, that, um, at the time it was brought up, and, and we said that we had budgeted to, you know, an internal equity study, it was a request that no, we shouldn't do an internal equity study, and that we would handle these situations on case by case there.
Okay.
Anything else on, uh, Tuesday's agenda that someone would like to talk about? Hearing none, or should I wait?
Is there anything, let me just ask you, with the, uh, with the understanding today, is there enough on the retroactivity to?
You did, um, you did. I just, I, personally, I just don't feel I have enough information, because I wasn't here, that I have a full understanding, and I understand what you're all saying, but I'm just trying to figure it out, and I have, like...
So, I can, I'd be happy to provide you copies of the minutes of the meeting that was held, if that would be helpful, um, and, and, and I feel like we did kind of do a chronology of what occurred, and, yeah, that'll be important, yeah.
Dave, when you worked for, sorry, when you worked for Saltwater, were you on levels?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, no, I worked for U S D A, and I was on levels, there was G S, I forgot what, general service, um, and, uh, yeah, there were sevens, and then when I came to McHenry County, I was on eleven, and then I got three counties, and I was made a twelve.
Because then when I was on F S A board, another government agency, we discussed the levels, at least, who, who cho, or who decided what level you were at, though?
Uh, the state office of my agency, Natural Resources Conservation Service.
Okay.
It was that, that state conservationist made that decision.
So, when we do the grades here, there's a whole analysis that's utilized, um, what's the, the study's a study, but the grades and how we assess, there's factors that place positions, you know, in the schedule and in the grades, based on how they're weighted, their duties, their roles, their, you know, responsibilities for, um, independence, critical nature of the decision-making process, you know, all those things, and that's how it gets scored. And so, yeah, I mean, the choices are do nothing, um, change the grade, and, um, you know, go effective as of April first, or whatever date certain you want to put on there, but our, our recommendation was a retroactivity. The timing of, of getting through this and doing a comprehensive research that had to be done, did take time, and then with COVID, um, we wanted to make sure, it's a lot, there was a lot going on last year, um, so I believe we were attentive to it, here in time that we were able to.
And Ed, I don't know if you heard me on Tuesday, but that your report was, uh, very comprehensive, very well done, so thanks for that huge effort.
Yeah. And, um, and listen, I honestly, it's so hard to remember some of these things as we go through, and so I'm like, just because, I, I'd like to go back and kind of figure out what it is that we talked about, because I know it's, so it's not about, I mean, it's not to you.
Thank you. Okay.
Uh, anything else anybody would like to discuss for Tuesday?
The only thing I had, and maybe we'll get to discussing later, on the other board business, uh, beyond the, the trust to speak at night, was there is a discussion on amending established meeting dates for the remainder, so, once we get through, uh, the annual meeting election of officers, the discussion, right now, as we've got plans, we've had the cow, um, we've had, um, the third Thursday, which used to be our regular meeting, the Tuesday night, which is the regular meeting now that follows, and then the finance and committee structure, um, we did not go back and change any policies relative to our meeting schedule, we left that in place, and tried to cash here as a, you know, an experiment, so to say, and so really, the board, how do you wish to operate for the coming year? If you wish to change the schedule, then we will need to pass that resolution with the amendment, and then we would need to pay, then we would need to post that, um, and pay for that, like we did last year, if we amend the schedule for this year, once you get to the end of the year, if you don't do anything, then we'll just yell the national move start on January first.
Well, I'd like to just move finance into the cow, and have it stay there one night.
I wouldn't, yeah, I was great at one meeting, uh, but if, uh...
You must be really fantastic at three.
I, anything to reduce, yeah, I would love to do that, John.
Yeah, I, I think we could, what we did the other night, and what we're doing tonight, I think we could roll them to one meeting and add the finance and the cow together for now, and hopefully, the day.
Again, let's try and cut out, let's try.
And the day's point, eventually get back to one, but for right now, if we just put everybody on the finance committee, then we'll all be here, and...
I, I support that.
Yeah, we had to talk about that before, like, with whether or not we should do a three-member committee, but then, you can't have any of the three people talking, you can't have two people talking, um, on a finance-related meeting, matter that's coming before the board, so it does, does kind of...
If we were only three on the committee, I couldn't call Pat, I couldn't call you, we couldn't talk to each other, we'd have, we'd have a quorum.
Right.
So, we put everybody on it, then when we have a cow, we have the finance committee, we're all rolled right into it, and...
And the finance committee agendas came up because issues came up, like that were monetary, right, is that how the agenda came up?
Well, yeah, and we, we tackled the budget, and, and there would be some nights that the cow will be more financed than it will be cow, but like tonight, really, we went over the agenda, which just took us a few minutes, now we've got the strategic plan to go through, but if we didn't have that?
We'd be out.
We'd be out of here already, yeah.
And there's always the potential, if, if there's some special issue, that you could have a special call meeting with, I don't know how many days notice, but...
Two, uh, forty-eight, forty-eight hours.
So, I, I, I have no problem, you know, combining the cow with the finance, and then the regular meeting, as the voting meeting, and, uh, and then we, we just address issues as they come up, I mean, I think our, all of us have a certain attention stand, so...
As they go, it might get shorter.
Yeah, right, 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 um, so, I mean, if we have too much of an agenda, we need to, um...
We could, yeah, we could change it if we, if we, if we get a little...
Right, but as a planning tool, sure, I think it's...
How do you feel about that?
I, I think that works well, I think, um, and then we don't need to, on this resolution, we'll just cancel the finance meetings, and we'll work together to create the cow agenda and frame that, and, um, I mean, I, I think that's great, I think, if we can be all this active, um, and, and take care of the discussion, so we have good discussion license in the boardroom, I think is really important, on issues that, that likely been doing, I mean, I thought last Friday, I was, last, uh, it was only Tuesday.
Tuesday, it was only two days ago, but I'm sure a lot has happened in that long time.
Wow, yeah, Tuesday, but it was a good discussion, I thought, last night, that we, we had that.
Well, now, how do you feel? You okay?
Yeah.
Man?
Oh, yeah.
Sounds great, sounds great, thank you, John.
So, you know, I, I think maybe we get right into the nuts and bolts of the budget, we may have to have a finance meeting then, or maybe we won't need a cow, one or the other, but I mean, there'll take most of it, but I would think we, we could free up one night a month for her.
Cool, all right, well, I'm, I'm last call, any concerns, uh, questions you have on next Tuesday's agenda for the, uh, board meeting? All right, hearing none, and let's move on with this agenda, uh, discussion of the fiscal twenty-one and twenty-three strategic plan tactics, what I'd like to do is, do you all remember getting this last meeting, that was the, the, the easier version to read of our, uh, yeah, and so, now, what we've already done, we've already approved the mission, the vision, the values, and the strategic direction, and the purpose, so can we just concentrate on the goals and tactics for all four, uh, what is it, land, uh, wetlands, water, land, and, I forget what the other one is?
Sure.
Would that be acceptable to everybody?
It's okay with me.
Okay. You lead us wherever you want.
Okay, uh, um, uh...
I think I have a power to go through here with us on the ones that's helpful to you.
Sorry to me? Oh!
That's a problem, so we can't go through here.
Wow, so let's go to goals and tactics, one point one, restore wetlands, improve natural flood storage capacity by restoring former wetlands, we have three objectives, I guess we'd call them, one point one A, one point one B, and one point one C. Any concerns or issues with those three?
Dave, can I just, one, before, before we jump into this, so, right, we've approved the, uh, strategic direction, the pillars, and our purpose, so that is all firm, the tactics that you're seeing in front of you, and it's time to review, is the, how we're going to work towards that, um, and we work to try to size it based on organizational capacity, most of these items are things that, because we knew there was not a lot of new resources, we went actually through with the leadership team, and executive team, and then the co-captains of the V I's, as we resized it, uh, based on our discussion of, of budget, what we were looking at in those three scenarios, and so, everything that, for the most part, that you were seeing are items that, um, we would be able to do under, um, obviously, scenario one, scenario two, um, three, it may create some challenges, um, where, like we said the other night, it would not be possible, but otherwise, most of it is, is within the resources that we have, is just how we're focusing and working to address some of these.
Great. Can I only comment on one point one A, identify plan permit and fund three wetland restoration, school springs is largely completed except for the monitoring, and we've got that hundred and twenty-five or hundred and thirty-five from Stormwater Ordinance, uh, to do Goose Lake, and so, uh, those are done and funded, and those two?
And they're on there because they represent, we started from this fiscal year, they are in motion, and, um, we could still need to identify the third project to be done, and that would be part of the process that we would look at.
And one point one C, I really appreciate that, I wish we had the time and the money when we re-meandered Nippersen Creek to document, uh, flooding protection downstream, that had to do a lot, we, unfortunately, we didn't do it, but, boy, that would have been really neat if we had.
With benchmark.
Yeah, would have been.
Well, the last two years, you might have just broke even. You know, I already say, well, I don't notice any difference, but then we've had, we've had way more water.
When you send your, well, you get a hundred-year storm every other week, it's hard to, hard to do that.
So, is there anything along these three tactics that relate to restoring wetlands? Um, we feel that this would help move towards that goal, if we achieve those in the next three years.
I do.
Is there something that you feel is more obvious that we've missed before, it's the trees, that is trustee, um, that would be related to restoring wetlands?
Okay.
I think so, because I mean, and so, we're still working like with, with dot, so we, um, with mitigations, we, this project, I think in terms of getting the mitigation dollars, is that coming around?
Well, this, this funding from Stormwater came from the Stormwater Ordinance, the wetland provision section, where someone violated the county's wetland protection rules, and they had to pay money into the fund to get out of it, so they accumulated like, what, a hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and thirty-five, and they applied, we applied for that funding, and we got it. we applied for that funding and we got it.
Well, perhaps it, as Ed and his team, who I presume are the spearhead on this, as they, uh, try to identify that, the third site related to perhaps Glacial Park and Akmatac, if they keep us in the loop as to what, what they're thinking, what they're looking at, if they have a, an A, a B, and a C, and, and we can participate in some of that, um, uh...
I'm pretty sure we've had to come back to us.
Yeah, yeah, you know, I think that make, would make a lot of sense, it would be a very educational, um, as well, uh...
Perfect. Thank you, Bill. Any other comments on those three? Okay, then, moving on to the one point two, minimize flooding, identify the largest remaining restorable wetlands in the county and share data with strategic partners. We've got four, identify largest remaining wetlands on GIS, geographical information system, a computer mapping program, identify strategic partners to assist in restoring remaining wetland, partners is a good thing, measure acres of potential gallons and water capacity, and publish report and communicate with partners and community.
Are these wetlands already identified, I mean, are...
I don't, I think they're going to.
Yeah, that would be part of the exercise, to go through all the work in the database, and to identify those particular areas that potentially are needing to be restored, so this is may, basically a measurement, it's not actually a, a do, but it's prepping for future, and it's working on partners to what areas need to be worked on, and so it would be the plan, kind of the plan before of the work.
This would be MCC property, right?
Well, uh, for the most part, but it may, with partners, it may be, again, if we're trying to minimize flooding in the county, it may not just be us.
Okay.
Right, so, but as far as using our technology and what we have, um, we've done a lot to be able to map that, and then show where some of those key opportunity areas are. Um, as far as measuring the acres and, and coming up with that metric, I think, again, it goes back to education of really what the work of the open space natural areas provide in those...
Yeah, that, identify and determine acres, yeah, it's a great tool.
And then when we say publish report, 'cause you're gonna see a lot of these things that go through the plan to say, okay, we've done this fact-finding, we know this, we need to share the story, and so, we're not necess, we're using our existing, um, communication vehicles, so whether it be through social media, through our landscape, through, you know, ways to promote the data, right, to share that data. Do we have a D on number one?
No.
On one point one?
One point.
There used to be, but, uh, there is on the big chart, but it's been removed. Oh, is this...
Oh, I see, yeah, good one, Lynn.
Big chart, it's not four, but we took one off, yes. Yeah, so my, uh, my apologies, this might, I may have pulled an old one before we collapsed. Oh, okay. (laughing) I'm, I'm sure, 'cause we were, we were cutting things out based on capacity, so, we're cutting things out, so this might be something we can aspire to, if, if things...
So, we good on one point two, minimize flooding? Do I take that silence, yes, okay?
It's like motherhood and apple pie.
All right.
Who can be for maximize flooding?
(laughing). We're all for it.
(laughing).
That's our position today, sir.
Scott McLeese, that's wonderful, I love it. Okay, let's move to one point three, minimize, uh, uh, maximize quality and quantity of surface and groundwater, assess the positive impact of twenty-five hundred acres of public open space on the quality and quantity of surface and groundwater. I love that, I really do. So, one point three A, evaluate the conservation district ag lands on water quality and degree of water infiltration. Uh, one point three B, determine whether existing Illinois geographical survey wells on conservation district sites measure quality, if not, research alternative methods, share how the conservation district impacts the quality and quantity of groundwater in the area, and participate in active stakeholders, as an active stakeholder in the McHenry County Water Resources Action Plan and Task Force in assisting and drafting, communicating, and implementing. That's currently on, doing this, already doing that.
Right. Going back to A, um, how are you evaluating the conservation district agricultural lands on water quality and degree of water infiltration? How is that, does it, done?
I didn't have to ask Ed, uh...
On one three eight?
Yep, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We're actually able to do this better than we wouldn't have been able to do this a year ago, uh, because of the two grants that we've been working on with, uh, the Liberty Prairie Foundation, so we've completed, for the most part, the Agricultural Conservation Index, which is a way of measuring resource quality on the farmland, and one of the things that we've been looking at is rate of compaction, and we've also been looking at the water infiltration factors that you get from various types of soils, and, and what we're trying to do there is a very general take. Um, the district ag land doesn't get credit for the amount of water that it actually infiltrates while it's producing crops, we're gonna try to put together some type of quantitative measure for that, where we can say, look, there's this much land in production, this much land in hay, this much land in natural area, and each one of those categories is providing not only water infiltration, and try to get a gallon, uh, but also qua, uh, quality, and that's where we move to B. We already have the, those geologic survey wells on not just district sites, but a number of other sites across the, the county, and they're twenty-four seven loggers, so the question would be to the geologic survey, can you, can you now, and if you can't, how can you modify what you've already got to give us some quality indicators? Uh, and we don't know the answer to that question yet, whether they could or whether they couldn't, and I know that's a very general answer, but part of what this, uh, this particular tactic and this goal would do, would help us develop the parameters for being able to measure that accurately.
Well, that, Ed, I remember this is really close, I remember I did this for thirty-five years, toward the end of my career, the erosion calculation was a huge database program, and you could run it compared to fall flow, with the farmer's conservation plan, and each farmer has a conservation plan on each tract, uh, and you, at the bottom of that, you can see the soil loss, and you can see the soil tillage impact rating, and there was another one that I can't remember the name of, but if you compared that to a fall flow situation, you could see the benefit of that conservation plan, at least to the NRCS.
And, and that's a big part of it, Dave, is, is our farm operators are working with conservation plants on all of our farmland, and they're doing a pretty good job of it, but it's not something that we have highlighted as much in the past as we have with natural areas, so the purpose of this goal is really get it out there and let folks know that agricultural land is providing a benefit for the county, in, in more ways than just producing food.
I agree with that wholeheartedly, you bet. Anything else on, uh, one point three?
Let me just ask you, I attended one of the meetings at, um, at, in Woodstock that related to the RAP, and I think Ed was there, and there were representatives from the Farm Bureau, and maybe from the Illinois, you know, the Extension Society, right, which is affiliated with the University of Illinois.
Yeah, I was there, I was at the same time you were, yeah.
Yeah, so, I, I mean, I found that very enlightening to see the, um, cooperation or, and, uh, cross, uh, activities, or activities, uh, you know, related to, uh, productive agriculture, and then, you know, the academic side, um, so I'm sure Ed, you, your, um, efforts, um, include liaison with those relative groups that already exist and are involved with agriculture, such as the Extension, you know, the State Extension Society and, uh, the Farm Bureau, or, or, am I just, uh, well, explain that to me, Brett?
Bill, you're right, and a good example of that is we're currently working with the Farm Bureau on a bioreactor grant, so the Farm Bureau got the grant to put in a bioreactor, which actually uses a, a methodology with woodchips to, to improve water quality and take out nutrients before they enter surface water. Um, the project's being done on district farmland, and it's being funded through the Farm Bureau, and we're assisting with the construction of it, and then our two organizations are working together to get the information out to the local community, local operators, so, um, yeah, the answer to your question is yes. We, we will be working with partners on this.
And I, and I think that's something that as we, uh, you know, release information to the public, that, um, we share the, uh, whatever publicity with these affiliated organizations, because, um, we're all sort of in it together, and, uh, what benefits them, benefits us, and back and forth, you know, um...
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bill. Anything else on one point three? Okay, let's move to one point four, uh, what...
Yeah, and then on one point one, I just, like, thank you, I just go back and check my notes, so the one point on here written, the one point one C got missed, so there is a, um, there was still monitor and measure result gallon vegetation wildlife under one point one, so it just got left on accidentally on that form as we were trying to do that, so...
So, C should be removed and not...
Well, no, there should be four, there's four, there's four tactics, uh, tactics under one point one. That was correct, that one was not dropped. Oh, wasn't, okay, so not dropped.
But that's when the communication's below for the regional president.
We're, we're communicating the mus, the result of the gallons that go into the...
Yeah, right, right. Which makes sense, I mean, like, most of them are...
I'm, I, you are me, one more time.
Well, other, with other, C, C was up there, it's just that D wasn't, right?
D had been cut.
No, D, C has been left off, D has been moved up to one point.
Okay, one to me. The most important tactic is up to one point one.
I wasn't in on it, so I didn't know.
And so, communicate, monitor, oh, monitor and measurement got lost.
Yeah, it's just in the transition when that's...
Oh, okay.
Hey, you know, that's...
All right, all right, good deal.
It's there.
All right.
Call that a Scrivener's error.
Tell me, uh, try to, this one.
Okay.
So, that makes sense, I mean, thank you.
Okay. So, that being understood, uh, let's then move to one point four, um, water activities work in active partnership to plan future opportunities for water-related activities. One point four, A is improve shoreline access for fishing for two locations, and B is develop an MOU with City Marengo and paddle to Kish to define roads responsibilities of the IDNR B A A D grant to middle, uh, to establish canoe kayak launch along the Kishwaki River in McHenry County. What is B A A D?
Yes, the name of the grant, off the top of my head, it's only back to boaty access.
Oh.
Grant, um, let me go through those two, um, two specifics, so there's an understanding of what those mean based on capacity, so, improving shoreline access, that will be solved by working on the shoreline to remove red mides and the brush, it's not to put in, you know, additional piers or things like that, it's just a cleanup on the shoreline that would help us make additional to...
You know where?
I don't have those locations...
I assume you have places like that that you're gonna do anyway.
Um, likely if we can get to it, but sometimes those areas, just based on staff capacity, we have many to focus on.
Sure, I mean, if, if you have a good year and it's not raining, and if not, you're gonna do that anyway.
Right, but, right, but we're gonna make a focus to align this, this is one area that we can, uh, make future opportunity for water-related activities, we think that's a way to do that. Um, the MOU with the City Marengo, I think the board remembers that, um, that group, uh...
Pat Lawler, yeah.
Pat Lawler's group, they approached the board, they went for a grant, they've been working with the City Marengo, um, they have a long-term vision, um, they're working with the Natural Land Institute, um, and they actually, they would like to develop the Kishwaki as a forward, and we have a new access at the county line that we did with Boone County Conservation District, and with McDOT and those improvements, but that takes the paddlers, you know, outward leftwards, doesn't take it through, um...
The boot cutting, right. They park in McHenry and they paddle into Boone.
So, on this one, though, this is really what we hope to do by defining the MOU, is understanding the parameters that the board is willing to accept in a time period of what are we willing to do, because I think there's some visioning out there, and again, some expectations of what they would love to see happen, uh, and it may not necessarily be our short-term, mid-term goal.
I think that's gonna take forever, the last meeting I went to of CREP, Kishwaki River Ecosystem Partnership, has been dissolved, CREP has been dissolved for years, and then they had this one meeting pass, got it started, and another guy, I can't remember who he was, uh, John Kramer was there, um, there you have a long way to go, so this, I, this is very possible we might not see any movement on this.
So, they, they have not secured all the financing that they need, that is...
Nor how to get the grant, I think there's, if you go, so with some issue with getting landowners who have access, who own both sides of the river, to get a grant or to get an approval to Kish.
I know they sent something to my father-in-law on land, on both sides, and I know that, he had a letter and he was kind of concerned about what he was signing off on.
That's, that's what I'm talking about.
You know, what his liability would be, and everything like that.
So, they have, they had some...
So, this, this would, this would define what is our role short-term, and that'll really be up to the board to come back and to really help us determine what that looks like, I do know there, um, again, there's land holdings, there's, uh, cleanup, river cleanup, um, there's risk management that we already do on the Nippersen, that we don't clean up, because if we don't own both sides, you know, we don't have the ability to do so, so it is a, it is depending on the scope and where we're willing to go, it'll determine the amount of resources that we have, which we currently don't have, to take on more.
But, those would be my concerns, if you call them up and ask them what, for an MOU, and they says, well, sure, we'll give you anything you want, if you wanna pay for it, and then we go, we don't have any money, um, so, is that a discussion we really wanna have?
So, that's why, that's why I wanted to establish who's, who's gonna do that, I wanna make sure we are not doing that, so...
Right, that's how I could be able to...
Oh, okay, I'm more concerned that, I'm more concerned that if we ask them for...
No, 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 I don't even want to be in the position of asking nobody, I'm definitely that.
Well, that's...
I want us to have a decision of where we are putting the period at the end of the sentence based on our ability and capacity.
Okay.
And that's why we're forming this before it gets, because it's already, it's moving, it's growing, I mean, there's a lot of great visioning of ideas, and I think that it, it aligns with our mission, it's just we have capacity.
Right, well, if they get the grant that is a six-figure grant, then, you know, once they have money, some of these other problems perhaps can be worked on, but, um, you know, um, I don't think we're adverse to cooperating to see that ultimate vision, it's just that we're not gonna volunteer to underwrite the, the...
Bingo.
The project, or to, uh, you know, assume unnecessary liability, so, I mean, however these matters evolve between, uh, you know, municipalities and private organizations and, and, uh, organizations like the district, and then perhaps this money comes from some state or federal program, all of a sudden it's, uh, you know, there might be a way forward, but it's, I don't think, statistics should be spending a lot of employee time yet, other than just listening, you know?
Bingo.
If I have any plans, let me ask this question, did we write tactics in a way that would ensure that anybody, again, I look at tactics, it's more the internal facing of what the district is doing versus an outside face, but I don't want anybody to pick out and think we're doing more than what our intentions are.
No, I think to develop the MOU, explain it all out, I think that's really clear.
Okay, so we have an understanding.
I mean, is, is the board agreed, does anybody disagree with that?
But it's based on them approaching us, in the first place, right? Well, they did already, right?
Didn't the board give a consensus that will work...
They wrote a letter before, before, but that was...
As far as it's been?
So...
And John was at that one, uh, uh, CREP, uh, meeting, where there was a lot of people there, but, uh, and I haven't heard anything sent.
But, but part of this is, in order to do some of the cleanup, which is part of this MOU, they need to get access on the district property, um, 'cause we don't have the staff to do that, so that becomes, until they get sponsored by, which I believe they will, we'll gain more information, that they were trying to be sponsored, 'cause they're a loosely connected group, but I think they were trying to get sponsored by the Natural Land Institute, that would be their...
In a bagel, yeah.
In a bagel, and so... Boy, I'm on this, but I just, you know, so you're aware, that would address hardship in the water area that it was placed there because it had approached the board, it's moving, we're gonna have to work through it.
Board okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, I'm still kinda doing this, but I, just at the end, but I, I think we'd love to be fine.
Bill, you okay?
Yes, I mean, I, right, I think we're, we're not committing anything other than, you know, keeping it on the table and, uh, the memorandum is, you know, the devil's in the detail, so we're. Right now, the memorandum is just the theory.
Yeah, right, right.
Linda, you okay? All righty.
We're good. There's only two underwater activities, so we felt that that was reasonable for where we're at, because we can't say some more, so that's.
Yeah, sounds good to me. Pillar two, our land. So, the tactics, two point one, restore natural habitat. Restore a minimum of five hundred acres of new natural habitat. That's the five-year natural capital improvement plan. Uh, develop, uh, two point one B, develop a communication strategy for the board of trustees approved natural capital improvement plan and promote the benefits of ecological restoration activities to new audiences. Identify up to five hundred additional acres of habitat, most suited for implementation of ecological restoration activities by the district or in cooperation with partners. Identify and secure funding for those five hundred acres of new habitat and implement the plan.
Why don't we ask, ask how practical getting this funding is going to be? And is it, is five hundred acres the magic number? Is it gonna be a hundred acres? I mean, well, to make it a credible type of exercise for you to seek partners in the sense of obtaining a grant, I mean, uh, there's a lot of room between ten acres and five hundred acres, so, I mean, I think it's, I think you're the one closest to, uh, helping us understand how this might work.
I think those are good questions, Bill, and, um, that's, and the short answer is that's probably why it's not a thousand. My definition of this, and I think our, our, our district's definition, definition of what it means to restore habitat is pretty broad. It, it would be easy to think of this as we're gonna restore five hundred more acres of prairie that, that we currently don't have right now, but it's actually a combination of things. Uh, we're partnering right now with a lot of different groups who have the same goals. You know, just use an example of how you can run up to five hundred acres without, um, without having a large impact on our operational situation as it stands right now. This spring, uh, we, we took our equipment and spent a day, a couple of days sowing down about a hundred and fifty acres of land that's part, uh, owned by open lands, but will eventually be part of the National Wildlife Refuge. So, it's all been sown into prairie. Uh, I think from the district's perspective, that's a hundred and fifty acres of habitat on the ground. We're not gonna manage it, uh, we're not gonna burn it. We may cooperatively work if it's near our property to, to do a combined burn, but we're put, we're working as a partner to put habitat on the ground and it's not necessarily in our sites, it's adjoining it. Another example would be, you know, when we put a grass waterway in or we enlarge a field border in our ag program, that produces habitat. So, that five hundred acres is coming in from a variety of different sources. When we have our big woods planting program and we take, uh, open fields within our existing woodlands that we aren't currently farming and we reforest them, that creates that habitat. So, I think that's how we're aiming for it, is through that variety of sources. And there will be some new prairie restorations, uh, where it makes sense, where they're been identified and approved in the natural capital improvement plan. Uh, but if you remember that document, if you had a chance to look at it, they're mostly small parcels and they're not our large agricultural holdings. Some of them are as small as five acre. So, I think it's doable. I think we have the, the staff to do it, the talented people out there to do it. We don't do large projects without identifying and securing grant or mitigation funding and it hasn't been our process for probably the last, certainly the last five years and mostly the last ten. So, uh, we wouldn't move on a large project unless we had the funding secured ahead of time. So, I hope that, that helps flush it out a little bit more and maybe answers some of your questions, Bill.
I, I appreciate that. I mean, I, I clarified it and seems, it makes it less, um, formidable in many ways to me.
To us too.
Ed, I have a question.
Sure.
Ed, when we, um, so when we seed something in for another group like that, do they reimburse us for labor and for the equipment or is that something we donate to them or how, how does, how does that work?
It's kind of a, a mixed bag. Um, there'll be times when we are reimbursed, there'll be other times when, uh, we're receiving something out of a grant and, uh, our contribution to it is in kind and that constitutes our in kind. So, a good example of that is we're currently in a three-year, um, oak, uh, ecosystem grant with the Morton, our Meridim and eleven partners. And the time that we spend, uh, at meetings on that project forms our in kind and we're, we're reimbursed about twelve, between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars for our staff time. And that in turn allows us to fund some of our big, some of our reforestation projects. So, most of the time we are reimbursed in some form or another, but sometimes we are the contributors and what we're contributing is our labor that, that helps match the grant. So, and it, it's structured differently because each grant is different.
Thank you. Anything else on two point one, A through E? Thank you, Ed. Anything else? Maybe I move on to two point two? All righty, uh, land preservation, preserve and protect parcels as opportunities and funding becomes available. Operative words, opportunity and funding become available. Identify opportunities, protect strategic natural areas and areas for potential development, trail linkages and other, and/or public programming, estimate costs, identify and secure funding for parcels identified for protection, secure protection for parcels identified to be extent opportunities and funds allow, and thanks to that last board, execute the financial strategy for retirement of the fishing installment.
We should get one of them done, at least.
Wait, one's already done. Two point two, he's done. Well, not yet.
Not quite. We have a, we have a couple of things to do, but we're, but we're well on our way, yeah.
And it doesn't, there's no acreage in here, there's no specifics, it's just that.
But that if something comes up.
It's, it's still part of our mission and, um, you know, it, it does what I can do.
Yeah. Any comments on eight, two point two A, two point two, two point two B? Okay, moving on, can I? All righty. Uh, two point three, site use, improve opportunities for site use and accessibility. Identify and seek funding for the annual maintenance projects listed in the capital asset management plan. Implement annual maintenance projects for the capital asset management plan and secure each project advance, advances accessibility as funds allow. Secure, uh, secure seek fundings for the hollow conservation area improvements, including accessible canoe kayak launch. Complete the new wayfinding signage at Wade Gitchell Park, the Hollows Conservation Area. And that's it, those four.
Okay, let me just, just in case, briefly give, uh, general thoughts on, on why you've got here. So, obviously our annual maintenance projects with our capital asset management plan, having funding to take care of those improvements, um, and to what we've done newly is when there's grant opportunities that we can leverage existing funds, we can find and work to go towards that, so that would help along the first one. Um, and then obviously implementation, um, is the next piece of it, which makes sense. Uh, the, the specifics of the Hollows Conservation Area, the reason why that was brought forward and one could ask why, why is this just a fixed project area and everything else has been, the camp has been brought to daylight? And, uh, on that one, um, the thought process was behind that if we were to receive a grant, we don't have an American Reciprocity Act access to the water for canoe or kayaking anywhere within our system. So, we thought if there was a way to focus on accessibility to make that area and there was a grant to do that, that would help, um, accomplish a couple different things. Um, and then the wayfinding signage, we've already been working towards that, but really to finish these two projects would make a difference. I mean, that's been something that we've been wanting to do. It's amazing as users use our site, um, you know, we've got, it's difficult, you're not familiar of where to go and having that, uh, just provided, uh, which is important. So, that would allow us to accomplish those.
Any more comments on two point three? Site use?
You could get credit for that canoe and kayak launch also under water activities.
Yes, we had a big debate on where it goes.
Well, I could cross-reference and put it in both places.
Yeah, take them both.
Yeah, we went back and forth, why is it here? Why isn't it there?
I mean, whatever you think is best for them.
You're right, absolutely. It's two for one.
Two for one, right.
Plus, plus that's a great site for, because I think this is a heavily used site.
Really heavily used, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's.
All right. Good? And lastly, under our land, it is, uh, two point four, trail connections. Work in active partnership, work in active partnerships to plan and protect future local and regional trail corridors. Cooperate with Hebron Township and Henry County Division of Transportation, IDOT, Western Railroad Transit Commission, establish trail connection plan for the Hebron Trail at Lang Road. Assess hum trail conditions, maintenance costs and make determination whether to repair, modify or abandon sections of the trail. I have a question on two point four A. Um, we are, it's trail already. Explain that, why we're doing that.
All right, well, there, and we've had recent conversation and, and, uh, staff has put together some information, so we're gonna need to make a full presentation.
Oh, what, Tuesday?
To the board in the future to, to, to talk about this. But, um, just a little bit of history, um, there was a trail segment that goes to Lang Road coming in from the North Branch and then there's about sixteen hundred feet where the trail, it's a deja vu of Oak Street and just the lake where the trail comes to an end.
Where does it come to an end?
At Lang Road.
Oh, right there.
And I don't have a map, um, but I'll, I'll send Linda, why she has a map, there's a map.
I know.
I'll pass it around, but it comes, it comes up to, uh, from North Branch, it stops here and then if you're coming from Hebron, uh, it comes right up here where the railroad is. And under this part, there used to be, it's not our land, and at one point in time, we were allowing access on that area. And so, once that was obtained and we know from a management perspective, we can't, we can't go on land that's not ours. So, we, we, we had a determinative end in these two spots. We own the land here, um, so where we're at, if you remember back in, uh, and we, we've written to the ICC, we worked to try to get, you know, authority to be able to make some of the crossings and it was a big project. Um, Hebron Township ended up, uh, getting a grant, um, and we heard about it, we were submitting a grant too because we need to get a safe crossing similar to what we did at Oak Street. You know, Oak Street took forever as well, many years until stars aligned and then it became cross affected because everybody was working together, um, and we finally got it done. So, um, thank you, Ann. And so, where we are with Hebron, in January, the board, um, we, we were in meetings and things and so, in January, we submitted a grant to do, uh, a trail connection, to do a plan and, um, we won't know if that's awarded until March of, of next year. So, that's in motion. But really, this is the plan. Um, Hebron Township did get, ended up getting a grant to make improvements to that crossing area. And when we sat down, we said, are there some efficiencies? Can you make some adjustments so that when we get our plans, the two could work together, right? Because they're there, we're not there yet, um, because we don't have any funding and we definitely don't have funding to put in a new trail. This is just a plan. So, that's a, again, it's a board discussion, where is it on your priority list? Uh, where do you wanna put our focus, our energies and dollars? But we definitely have a trail that, that we can't, under good faith, you know, legally, you know, direct people onto land that's not ours and there is concern for safety on Lang Road. And I don't believe they want us on Lang Road.
I don't see why.
John, you were out there to.
I went, I, I had a phone call, I went and walked in last Sunday.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, I, I had a phone call on the road and I personally talked to him, I said, well, I better go out there and. I was going, I'll go out and walk in.
You said, did you see where people were?
Well, I mean, it's not a dead end because everybody's figured out a way to go. So, I mean, there's horses riding on it, there's, there's bikers and, right, so it's not a dead end because people are using, uh, along the railroad.
I guess I better go walk it.
And then, but along the railroad, it gets quite muddy and the one people that I knew that was using it, they said, well, you're not keeping that one for a trail up, it's full of mud and you do a better job. So, that's why we don't keep it up any better than what it is. But then, like, it's extremely muddy, he's, I mean, because he's going out every weekend. It's that people get up on the tracks and then drive the tracks until they get to where they've stopped, so. So, we really got people in mud or we got people on the tracks, yeah.
And we're not directing them, I mean, so again.
Yeah, they're just doing what they.
Right, so there's a liability. If we said go ahead, then that was, but we're not, we're saying it ends.
But people get to the end of one or.
They gotta go, they're, they're going.
They just make their way across, yeah.
What's the surface for the trail?
Well, from that fifteen hundred feet, it's muddy.
It's muddy, but it was, it's very nice. It's a very nice trail, it's just.
No railroad right of way.
It's, it's just too bad that, um, we got this period that we don't, so we can't really.
But together, so if you have a, you need to have a, a grade separation, these are, these are the, these are the Lang Road, are you gonna make an underpass or an overpass?
Well, I, you know, the easiest where we thought would make sense to do what is happening at Oak Street is to widen the area and allow a pedestrian crossing, um, because there's specifics that they would allow where you just not your bicycle and then you cross over and then connect. I mean, that was the vision, but it may not, um, that may not work. And so, once you start looking at those other options of an underpass or an overpass, it gets increasingly, there, it's a costly investment.
Underpass would probably not be very, like, like.
Too low, it's flat land, I'd go cry.
I, I, you'd have to go all the way.
You have to give it swimming. Swimming trunks and swimming.
It'd be a water trail, not a.
It's muddy now, I don't, I don't think going down would be an option.
So, that's just, again, it's a, it's a cost, uh, obviously trails are very popular, um, you know, it's just where, where is this? It's the board, there's obviously constituents that want us to do something, um, and, you know, so we're identified, we're trying to figure out, that's the plan, what are we gonna do? How are we gonna solve it?
Uh, you know, I'm thinking of the prairie trail in Ringwood where it crosses Spiner's Mill Road, um, I mean, there is, some people get off their bikes and walk across Spiner's Mill, most people, you know, look both ways and, and ride. And of course, that is where the railroad tracks terminate by the Old, Old Dean Plant and then it's just the railroad right of way. But, uh, I mean, that's neither an overpass or, um, um, underpass and it, imagine would have more traffic, um, more use than this trail to Hebron.
Yeah, yeah. I know Amy and, and John, you are on, and Perry, uh, all three very familiar, um, with this area, so if there's anything else that you would like to add, but did I do an okay job of summarizing kind of where things are in general terms?
Uh, can you folks hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, yeah, the, uh, yes, you did summarize that, um, the complexity there is, I, I mean, this is, this is deja vu to Oak Street. Um, this is almost identical to what was occurring at Oak Street. And just like at, at Oak Street, um, uh, there, uh, as John pointed out, they found their way. I mean, they, they created a renegade trail there that we have, uh, honest to Pete, never marked as a trail of ours. Uh, in fact, a few years ago, we said, don't go here, I mean, the trail ends. Um, so, um, you know, just to beef that up a little bit, that message, but they still go there. Uh, and so, as Elizabeth said, we do have to solve it. We have a crossing of a road, uh, and we have a crossing of a railroad and they're all within a very short proximity to one another. And so, that. And so, that is, um, that creates the complexity. But the, again, the irony is, we've been through this just three years ago, or four years ago. Um, you can almost pick up what we did in Crystal Lake and put it out at, um, at, uh, the, the big difference, or a big difference, and anybody that was on, on site there can tell, it's pinned in by, um, by, uh, by wetlands. And that is a big difference of the two situations. So, uh, given that information, um, it, it's not going to be an, an easy solve, but yeah, we need to solve this one, and, uh, and, and you may remember that we did submit a grant application to recreational trails program, uh, in the, uh, spring, asked permission sometime, I think it was in the winter, and submitted it in the spring, and, uh, to help us solve this issue. Uh, so, um, we're waiting for a word on that. It'll take a while, I think, for it to get through the process, but we, you know, we do have our intentions to solve this issue. And that's really what two point four A is about.
Thank you, John. Any other comment on two point four, Trail Connections? Hearing none. How about moving on to pillar number three, our community? Uh, uh, three point one is goals and tactics. Inspire Conservation Ambassadors. Energize, educate, empower community citizens and active volunteers. Celebrate the district's fiftieth anniversary with various events and activities to recognize past accomplishments and develop public support for the future. Formulate a com- committee to evaluate, evaluate the opportunity to establish criteria for conservation ambassadors. Identify key groups, contacts, and establish some formal recruit plan. Implement Conservation Ambassador's Program and grow and strengthen active volunteer faith in the Conservation Ambassador Program. This was brought up at Conservation Congress, wasn't it? The, uh, the, uh...
Well, developing definitely ambassadors that, uh, are available to know more and get educated about the district with some of the common themes throughout the Congress. Um, this specific way that we're looking to respond to this, uh, came from Chief King, and she would take the lead on it. It's almost as if it's like a citizens', uh, police academy program that, um, they would get familiarized with different areas of the organization. They would manage that. So, again, that's why it has Police Department as the responsible team. That then provides a little sense of comfort to the rest of the capacity of how it would impact the rest of the staff, uh, as they were taking the lead on this. So, uh, it's an innovative program, it's been done in other places, and, and we believe, again, the more you can educate others about what we do and why we do it, um, the better off we are towards, uh, working towards our goal to, uh, so this is more of a formalized program.
Right.
Right. And again, was I think, where you got your, because I think it was neither that same meeting that was before, that, um, Chief King came in and presented it to us, so, um, but it's a little bit separate from, like, trying to get people out there advocating for it, it's more specific, um, that's the approach that she was talking about.
Is there a nature for, anything for this, is there a nature to...
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I think it's adults, um, um, but I, I don't know, I think that'll be defined as they shape the program, um, of, of their parameters and what that looks like. So I don't want to speak to, as they begin to formulate a committee, they'll begin to establish what's the best way to...
I'm not, I, I would, uh, just wonder if there are going to be any hidden costs or, uh, supervisory costs, or taking people out, away from their normal jobs in order to implement this? Um, so I think as we are dealing with, you know, lots of budgetary issues, um, I mean, I think we have a wonderful volunteer program, and if you wanted to call them ambassadors instead of volunteers, or give them a little boot, I think, I think that's, uh, that's to be encouraged, but, um, I, I, I worry about building a structure and then deciding that, well, we need to support it with, um, with hard dollars or real time, and then find that it's, it's creating conflicts, uh, with other parts of the mission. So, I would be very, um, I'm not, I would just be cautious here. You've got, you have to walk before you run. Uh, I'd be interested to, to see a plan of how this would be implemented on sort of a, perhaps a trial basis, and then assess, is it worth the time and effort of the people involved and, you know?
Probably would be helpful to see what she had pulled together, because I thought it, I thought it really, it got us through there, right?
I remember how much, I'm not sure how much I'm remembering it though.
Right, right, and it was interesting, and, and I'm not either, but I do, I do remember it being very similar to like a citizens', uh, police academy for citizens, and so I think it would be instructive maybe to have something like that, I don't know. Yeah, Laura has her hand up, so Laura's not, oh, Laura, there you go. Uh, you want to speak to this?
Sure. So, um, what I wanted to say is that this is modeled after a program that I ran with one of my former employers, and so, um, there is no real investment in creating the program concept. What I did was just very quickly, probably took me about twenty minutes, was I took the areas we used to teach on, and I made them relevant for the Conservation District. So, uh, the model is, um, an eight to ten week program, probably eight weeks in the classroom, one week as a field trip, and one week as graduation. You bring the folks in for, usually you set up two hours of programming per night, you set up, um, two present, two to three hours of programming, okay? Um, you set up two presentations, you usually give them about an hour each, but then you allow some time for questions and answers. Some people present a little shorter, some people present a little longer, and then they would have the option of, of each team, uh, sending a staff member in, uh, to give that presentation, uh, or, um, them providing the content, and then having, uh, somebody who's working with the program, uh, to, to give or deliver, uh, the content that was, um, prepared by the other team. Uh, in this environment, we also could probably do it virtually and create some small videos. I don't think it's a lot of extra work for anybody, but it is approximately a one-hour time commitment from each division. Now, some managers have expressed to me, well, yeah, it's one hour to give the presentation, but what about creating the content? And what I tried to explain is, there's no reason to overthink this. These are people that we are trying to educate and familiarize with our structure. It would be like any one of you, if I asked you to please come in and, and talk about yourself and, and what you did for a living for an hour, and the importance of the work that you needed to do. It doesn't have to be some type of video format, it doesn't have to have a PowerPoint, it's just an opportunity for people to be exposed to the different divisions within the Conservation District and the varying type of work that each division is responsible for. As far as hidden costs, um, you know, usually you give the people all like a T-shirt that says, you know, um, Conservation Ambassador at the end of the program, or something like that, you're talking about ten or twenty dollars a person, uh, you would probably limit the program, uh, you would probably have to buy some water and maybe some, you know, bags of chips or, or cookies or snacks, whatever snacks are appropriate in this pandemic day and age, uh, for the persons. But, um, there's not really any big costs. And then, for the field trip day, what you usually do is maybe ask the people to meet at a different location than you normally meet, and we could bring the program to them. So, if it was time for education to be, bring, uh, do a, a presentation, we could do the presentation down at Prairie View, and then the travel time would be on the part of the program participants and not on the district's staff members. Um, I firmly believe that this would have a high level of value, I think would go along the lines of celebrating our fiftieth year anniversary and speaking about all the things that we've accomplished over the past fifty years, and I think would do a great deal of benefit to create these community ambassadors. Um, hopefully, we do get some additional volunteers out of this program, but this program is not, um, necessarily a volunteer program as much as it is an education and awareness program, so that we have people on the ground within the communities, um, understand the district in, uh, with a deeper level of under, of, of, of comprehension, so that they can speak to their neighbors and friends about the important work that the Conversation District, or Conservation District does if it ever comes up in conversation.
Great, thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Laura.
Yeah, so we did have, we just put a brief estimate, if you write in kind, no matter what work that we're doing in this plan, it is requiring, um, staff capacity to work towards these specific things, that if we want to achieve, if we want to inspire Conservation Ambassadors and Energize, Educate, you know, how are we going to do that, right? So we identified that was one way that we could be successful. Um, obviously, the fiftieth anniversary, what that looks like, um, you know, we'll be celebrating that next year, and that will be part of our budget, and of course, um, respectful of the budget that we have and capacity to do certain events, but that is a major milestone, and we'll be responsible, and we'll come back to you and kind of give you a general highlight. But, at this point, just to give you, we're not looking, um, to do any major, um, you know, and again, I want to know from the board, you know, and this is a discussion of, of, and maybe, not tonight, but as we work towards it, what are your expectations for the district's fiftieth anniversary? I mean, we would look like seeming throughout the year, doing a variety of different things and being responsible with resources to give it, the branding to give it, the celebration, the milestones, um, but, you know, our budget doesn't allow us to go out and put banners out on all our sites, or to go out and, and do a lot of, um, above and beyond, you know, or a big gala where, you know, time is being focused. But if that's the board's intent, then we need to know that, because that would be how we would budget for it, and that's what, you know, so we need to know what your expectations are.
I have no idea.
Yeah, that's not something I'm highly focused on, but I think the foundation could play a role in, in supporting this, and, uh, and maybe be the source of some ideas, uh...
Oh, I think Wendy and her team would have plenty of ideas.
Yeah, and they've been working on that, but...
I counted them to throw it out and let me evaluate. I can't, I, that's not my forte.
Right. So I just want to know too, just as we jump forward with things, how much involvement as we look towards that, is the expectation from the board on the fiftieth anniversary? Just so there's...
I think it's important. It is a milestone.
Well, some, yeah, I have some direction on how much, or kind of how much we're willing to invest in that, because we could say Wendy and, um, Caitlin go out and her staff go out, she would come up with her ideas, but, you know, we could put them through a lot of work, and we can say, well, no, that's, that's too much, or we're not going to go that far, or whatever, and maybe giving them some guidelines, and you're right, this is not my forte, so I'm willing to do it.
Yeah, but, you know, really, I think that's important. If they get an idea, take fifteen minutes of strict, uh, brainstorming, this is the kind of thing we're talking about, and let us take a look at it, um...
We can go this much, this much, this much, and here's what it looks like.
I don't know any other way.
On a political level, this might be an opportunity to, um, present some ideas to the county board as to what our next fifty, fifty years would look like and how we should relate to them. Uh, so, I think you could get into some pretty substantive issues, uh, as far as, uh, you know, what the future might look like, uh, but that would be not, sort of necessarily as much for the general public as for, um, staff and the board dealing with the, um, the state and the county.
Yeah, so clearly, it is happening next year, and, uh, again, the resources that we've identified is, would be existing within the resources the district already has, so within the marketing department, we weren't necessarily requesting to go above and beyond that, but that's why we'll come back, and, um, you know, it is just, again, if the expectations were to do something more than that, then we would need to shift to do something, um, because the resources aren't there.
I, I think if, if the goal was, we did, if we could do something that, um, works with, only more, so they identify with, with, and go some relationship with them, and I think it's also an opportunity for the foundation to go out and promote it, and maybe, maybe make a fundraiser out of it, or find a way to tie people in to the state with, um, enhance their, their ability to, to donate or whatever, so, you know, we could do something that wouldn't necessarily have to be costly to, to be unofficial in a certain way, but both things.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a great opportunity to celebrate and bring just everybody together in excitement, and we, if we do it well, um, it can be that little stimulus that would help get everybody mobilized and, and, you know, and...
And maybe not just the county board, I guess, that there is another, that we've worked with, and I don't, I don't know how we tie all that together, but...
And those things take time, right? And again, capacity to pull all those connections together, so it's not an easy, um, uh, a small task in that too.
Great. Anything more on three point one, Inspire Conservation Ambassadors? Hearing none. Three point two, Cultivate Knowledge. Provide a professional knowledgeable team to achieve land, water, community, and stewardship goals. Complete implementation of the Conservation District Right Succession Plan. Invest in staff and volunteer education, training, and team-building opportunities. Identify advanced leadership development schools, leadership, advanced leadership development schools, opportunities, and develop a process to annually select staff to attend as part of the Conservation District Succession Plan. Assess needs and provide appropriate technology, training on software and hardware to assist team members to be more efficient in achieving goals, smart forms, cloud solutions, et cetera, and explore and seek to implement systematic policies and training opportunities incorporating D E I, diversity, equality, and inclusion principles to attract and retain a diverse and talented team of employees at the same level of diversity as represented in the community, according to the U.S. Census Bureau demographic reports. Well, I think this inspection plan is a very much needed, you bet.
So this, this shows that, you know, we want to retain a team that's, that's knowledgeable, because the cost to replace and the cost to, uh, and of course, there's a quote that says, uh, we're striving to keep someone on board that doesn't, doesn't have the knowledge than they think, you know, um, and so, you want to be sure that we, we invest in that. This shows some strategic investments to strategically, um, send, you know, those and grooming certain staffs and schools, and some advanced leadership opportunities. Um, clearly, with the tools and technology, we're moving more towards that. Um, so, to accommodate that, we're going to have to make some adjustments within the budget, um, to pick some of these things on, but they would be, you know, we believe it's an important, how much we can do is going to be dependent on budget.
You're going to really clean that up for everything we do.
Everything together.
Exactly, right, everything.
Yeah, that goes without...
Absolutely. Right. Um, anything on there that, um, there's concerns, disagreement with, um, I mean, I don't know?
Anyone? Hearing none? Should, yeah, should I move on? Okay. Um, promote, uh, three point three, Promote Health and Wellness. Establish the Conservation District as an important community partner for improving the health and well-being of Henry County citizens. Three point three A, Develop a Preparedness Response and Recovery Plan for Community Happiness and Business Functions and Operations. Provide nature-based relief to the human community during a pandemic to provide leadership recovery. We've already done that, but...
Done, that's on...
Done, yeah. Um, Identify Community Partners to Assist in Improving the Health and Well-being of Henry County Residents. Work with Partners to Identify Initiatives for Health and Wellness and Apply to Existing Programs, Site Amenities as Appropriate. Develop a Marketing Plan, Campaign, and Establish Budget. Identify Programs and Unstructured Self-Dited Opportunities. Promote Program Benefits to Incentivize Staff Participation. Implement Campaigns. Identify Partners to Provide Indoor Recreation, Health, Wellness Programs and Activities. Kind of like Motherhood and Apple Pie, isn't it, too, Bill?
Exactly, I think the pandemic did even sort of spotlight that we were heading in this with the goal from the Congress, I mean, it kindly identifies that we're in this space, and so, obviously, the, uh, one of the impacts, the benefits, the values of open space and, and what we provide, so it's just, again, more in communicating that and leveraging that into the general...
But that three, point three D, Develop Marketing Plan, Campaign, and Establish Budget for that Preparedness Response Recovery Plan, right?
No, for the health and wellness to, to...
Oh, health and wellness, okay.
So, I don't know what that's going to look like, this would be assigned as to... This would be assigned as to marketing education, and so they'll be developing a program, um, as, you know, in existing programs that they already have. But it'll, again, it'll shape kind of the seeming, uh, that'll be have a focus on it.
Well, they, they might, uh, reach out at some point to, you know, the major hospital organizations, and, uh, particularly the people involved in rehab, and, uh, you know, see whether there's some, uh, interest in cooperative proj- project or cooperating with the healthcare establishment. I mean, it's, I, I think there could be some very creative opportunities there, but, you know, um, you're going to be working with healthcare professionals, not amateurs. And so, um, oh, we, we can offer these facilities and some of the staff, but you have to find out from, uh, on the other side, what their needs are, what might be practical. But I think that would be a very, uh, could be, um, you know, very innovative.
I appreciate that, I think so too. I think partners is a big part of this. Um, and, um, there has been discussion briefly with, um, what, that is the health department, um, as well as, you know, potentially the Mal Health Board. I mean, there's just a lot of, the county's kind of tied into this too, in the way we work collaboratively together. So, I think there's a, a real strong, uh, great potential.
Great potential, yeah.
Anything more? Okie. 3.4, influence, uh, influence advocacy and initiate and advocate for legislative public policy objectives by working with other conservation agencies that protect and safeguard public lands, water, wildlife, and wildlife in McHenry County, reestablish the districts under the Conservation District Act of 1863, which aligns with other LNI conservation districts as far as the legal debt capacity and budget approval. Develop a communication strategy to build community support on average annual investments needed to manage and sustain the operations of the conservation district to approve quality performance standards from 2024 to 2030. And increase communication and collaboration between conservation environmental agencies in McHenry County by formally establishing McHenry County Conservation Alliance, which would meet biannually or annually to protect and safeguard public lands, water, wildlife in McHenry County. I will say with regard to 13.4C, uh, maybe it was fifteen years ago, but we did that. We got every conservation agency in McHenry County, and we listed the top fifteen or whatever, the highest quality things that were unprotected. And several years ago, that list was totally achieved. So, by getting together and identifying things, we all worked together to get those things done. So, that was a very good thing. I like that.
So, these picked up, I know earlier, we had discussion on advocacy, and so this was kind of one of those pieces where we left it, but we never kind of finished where we were headed. So, this was where we thought, okay, to pick this back up and place it there, if we want to focus on moving that, or, or if there is something different on what we intend to do, but that was our placeholder. And then, obviously, the board had to have discussion of how do we position ourselves so that we're ready, right, when we're beyond that payoff time? Uh, and so having that strategy and getting that community support between now and then is critical. Would you see something different, do you see, I believe those are achievable? Would you like to see something else?
No, I think all, I think those are all, um, expressions of, of goals that we should, both as, uh, staff and as the board, try to, you know, try to work toward. And, uh, it may involve some, um, brainstorming. Uh, it certainly is going to involve some, uh, input from our legal counsel as to, you know, what's, what's feasible, what, you know, what type of, um, creative thinking, you know, we can use to push our goals forward. If it involves dealing with a legislative body, um, I mean, it's really big picture stuff.
Sure is.
And, you know, the issue of organization, and I, I tend to not, um, be a joiner. I mean, you're, there are already many organizations that relate to our mission. I don't know that we need another organization. So, but I defer to people who are organizational people as to whether there's, uh, whether we can work with an existing organization that, uh, that is active in McHenry County that, you know, we share the goals of conservation and environmental improvement, or if you need, uh, you know...
Yeah, there is an alliance, there was, it was, we all got together, we never called ourselves an alliance, but we haven't done that in quite a while.
Okay.
So, this would, uh, calling conservation partners together would be a great idea. MCCD Land Conservancy, IDNR.
I think, I think part of the goal is that we should kind of press, talk to every ecosystem, but it's just the same thing. You've got these groups out here, they draw on people, you've got another group out there, they're drawing people. I think the, I think, if I'm not mistaken, it's kind of like what you're getting at. We have, there's so many organizations out there, but by bringing them all together under an alliance, we can maybe combine efforts, maybe you're more impactful, because you're, you're now, you're talking about larger numbers, and there's a little bit more of, is there a common goal that we can work towards, um, here?
You get them to cooperate instead of compete.
Right, well, exactly, right, that was, yeah.
I think that's what it's really what's there. Like, the Chicago Wilderness Alliance is a four-state alliance where, where everybody comes to underneath to accomplish large, big goals. And I think from McHenry County, which would be a subset, um, because I think there's confusion. And so then, it gets territorial. And so this was to address maybe some of those things to which we need to, you know, conservation is as strong as us working together. We, we, we don't need to be adversarial, we need to show how we complement one another, we should do different things. Um, yeah, the only other thing I would say, and I guess throw out to this group, would say, you know, this conservation community is, are we leading, is, should there be a focus under advocacy? Are we missing somebody? Are we missing, in order to meet the goal?
I don't know how to answer that.
Well, I mean, so, we got, we're, we're talking to people that are in the space, right? They believe, well, oh, yeah, right, yeah. So, are we missing, are there some other, and I don't know from a goal, not to add one more, because we've got plenty to do here, so I don't want to add that, but is this, are we, are we focused on the choir, so to speak? Are we not expanding beyond, I mean, are we missing an opportunity?
2.4 of the alliance, the proposed alliance?
Well, just under advocacy, and if we're going to achieve towards advocacy, it'd be effective.
Yeah, so I think we, we need to reach out to the business community and, and if the things are, um...
Good.
Well, no, no, I just think that this is like this choir, right? This is talking to people who have the same purpose in mind. I'm thinking more about, you know, um, this is McHenry County EDC, where it's about, well, how do we play into the larger economic picture? Where do we, where do we become part of that? Um, the economic value that draws businesses and people to live here, um, this is, this is me the other day. Now with COVID and people being able to stay at home and not travel, they get to stay here, and they can so, so, not everybody, because people go, but, you know, the idea that you can live, work, and play here, um, our business communities are trying to attract businesses and more particles to draw people to the county. And so there might be different partnerships, I think, that you're thinking about that might not be what we would normally think about, so... So, it was quite a lot of things to think about.
And again, I was looking at capacity and what can we manage to do? And I think we start, you see a lot of different areas of where we're doing outreach to, um, you know, township, we work with the county, we're working with, you know, farm agricultural community areas. I think the business, the business community probably gets picked up on the health and wellness piece. It's just so that we're not necessarily just, um, staying in our comfort zone, I guess. Impact is larger, critical mass.
Right.
Who impacts more, the communities, and I think we emphasize.
Any other comments on influence advocacy? Be done there. Okay, last pillar, stewardship. Um, goals and tactics, 4.1, financial stability, balance new and existing resources with core activities to ensure long-term organizational stability. Develop an annual report on deferred maintenance made throughout the district. I think that's a great idea and very important. Develop an annual comprehensive project list or by quarterly update to the board of trustees. Increase revenue from traditional and non-traditional sources, user fee, user program fees, rental agreements, et cetera.
My deferred maintenance is just, uh, to be able to communicate what and how we're falling behind. So, it's not, it's not a celebration, but it's just more of just a reality of...
I think that's the story we got to tell, yeah.
Um, comprehensive project list is something that we're doing, but this is, this is under that financial reporting, so that's why we placed that there. And then the focus on revenue, um, I know there's an opportunity for cost recovery for the review on some of that, so this was fallen, this area.
Any concerns with the 4.1? Okie. Wendy, you okay? And John, you good? Carolyn?
Yes.
All right. Uh, expand philanthropic support. Work collaboratively with Gennett County Conservation Foundation to grow base of donors and volunteers to support sustained and advanced conservation education and recreation programs of the conservation district. Assist the foundation board of directors and executive director in achieving their adopted three-year strategic plan. Recruit nominee board directors who can fulfill the McHenry County Conservation Foundation's mission and vision and achieve the goals and objectives within the adopted three-year period. Identify projects for funding presented to the board of trustees and board of directors for approval, and ensure project completion within specified time. That's a good deal. And assist McHenry County Conservation Foundation board of directors and executive director in developing the organization's fiscal twenty-three to fiscal twenty-six strategic plan. I think 2.4.2B is really important. We need to broaden our base somehow. They're lovely conservationists.
And by having it in our, our strategic plan and where our focuses are not left independently on their own, then it shows that it's a partnership, and we need to be working together, um, in tandem. Is there anything else that you would like to see? Is that enough? And Wendy, being in our liaison too, do you think this shows a good...
Absolutely.
Any other comment? Okie dokie. Uh, effective governance, provide the board of direct, board of trustees and elected officials with continuous in-depth knowledge about opportunities and challenges facing the conservation district to ensure informed and fact-based decision-making. Establish a by, an annual, biannual conservation site through the board of trustees and the county board of that. Identify topic lists of what areas need better communication vehicles to inform board of trustees and elected officials, determine what the questions are for the frequently asked questions list, uh, for staff to provide better answers and appropriate communication method. For example, natural resource restoration, agricultural lands, master planning process, site planning, facility maintenance, standards of care, public safety, hunting program, wildlife resource center, all of that stuff. Foundation, groundwater recharge, wetlands, foundation, et cetera. And one more. Uh, develop education materials, physician papers, infographics, webpages, flowcharts, where appropriate, better inform board of trustees, elected officials on frequently asked questions and topics. Develop two- to three-minute video infomercials on video-worthy projects targeted for multiple orders and very, very promotional purposes on the website. Yeah, that reminds me of those, uh, things that Caitlin's doing with, uh, with, well, everybody was being stabbing out, didn't he just do one, and, yeah, very nice.
So, a lot of times, we end up, particularly newborn, boarding, and you're going through with a lot of areas and so many things of why, you know, why, how do you guys manage, you know, prescriber? Or why, why are you doing restoration, selection, so whatever those topics come to be most important, um, you know, um, we thought that might be a great way, as a, yeah, to the library, and that will help everybody in a creative way.
A, gets back to, uh, so you were talking about, um, 3A. I know that's more about the, um, 50th anniversary, but building relationships with the county board, and, um, doing something not just for the 50th, but on a kind of ongoing basis for...
50 might be a good time to kick it off.
Because we used to meet with them once a year, um, to come over, and this picture that's up here, where they would come, and we would kind of go over and, and kind of have coffee and...
And we usually had a lot of the board members there.
It was wonderful, and then it stopped.
It was wonderful. Oh, golly, my first term.
Twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen.
Exactly it. To be there, I ain't going.
I'd have to go back and look, I think it was, uh, I don't know if it was twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, I mean, yeah, it was a while.
Yeah, it was great, well, actually, it was, but I'd get back, yeah.
So, improve since then that we're short of money, we charge them for coffee, right?
There you go. Right, yeah.
And that's not only nice, you can give a penny to them.
Well, we'd have to get...
It's a fundraiser.
Yeah, we...
You're invited to...
Practically speaking, you probably, probably have to get through the pandemic and...
Yeah.
Have vaccine available. But I think this, you know, if you look, heard of planning for twenty-one, uh, I think it would certainly be doable. And then, whether you do it every year or every other year, uh, you know, I think, I think it's a very good idea.
Yeah, we just don't want to be a burden for another meeting, so, like the alliance, one or tw- once a year or twice a year is about enough, you know what I mean?
But it wasn't easy, it wasn't, you know, it was a couple of hours, it was done. Um, we published it in a joint public meeting. Um, the thought of adding some type of tour is, I mean, it was great to captivate them in the building, but there's so much, I think, there's just many of you to get out to different sites.
Is that Bob, no, is that Bob right there?
That's Bob, yeah, that's Bob.
So, is that okay, everybody okay with 4.3? The last one, technology infrastructure, enhance organizational effectiveness through the use of reliable and emerging technologies and information resources to support innovation, increase accessibility and efficiency. Evaluate interesting, and that, evaluate investing in an intranet mode add-on enhancement that available to revise, I think we just approved that one, didn't we?
Well, we did with the main website, so there, somehow, we have, we already have, uh, what we call Wild Space as an intranet, um, but there's limitations of who can access and what. So, again, we'll have to prioritize some of these things to what's the most cost-effective and what would come first, or... Because there is a lot of technology initiatives here that...
There are.
Financially may be difficult to accomplish all. So, there's a couple ways to solve it. Revives one solution, um, outlook, uh, as a solution to, um, um...
Don't need to be finished.
I would need to be educated, because I'm...
Yeah.
Tech savvy as to, you know, what's, educated about, what, what an intranet module add-on is, yeah.
Yes, it is, yeah. So, an intranet, just to, so, obviously, your internet is on the wide web of everybody, log on. I mean, internet is an internal private way we communicate, and we put like our staff forums and calendars and things like that. So, staff working remotely can log on to that and have easy access to kind of our internal...
Just the district.
Just the district staff is a portal that has our, uh, you know, newsletters go up there, forums, things that we all need to know. It's how we communicate internally.
Then your plan, your availability plan, utilize more cloud... Then your plan, evaluate plan to utilize more cloud-based solutions for storage backup and collaborations programs, ensure all software, hardware, best practices are current and up to date. For example, Office three sixty-five transparency portal to reduce FOIA, uh, et cetera. Evaluate plan and utilize more technology for work in the field and remote work environments, tablets, smartphones, laptops, cameras. Invest in a computerized maintenance management system, including work order submittal and tracking system for sites of fleet and, uh, effective fleet and facilities. Initiate county agency-wide initiative to evaluate data to be monitored and measured and then research cost-effective solutions for entering, managing, and viewing and reporting and real-time agency performance metrics and project. I mean, that sounds really important. Migrate to a smart form environment to reduce physical paper storage, uh, document signing, storage, uh, purchasing forms, receipt. Complete and utilize agricultural index for tracking and management of district farmland. Replace outdated fuel management tracking software program at fueling station and evaluate most cost-effective replacements for outdated phone systems that football sale administration a lot, which is Lost Valley, Business Center, and Prairie. Boy, if you can cut down on a- adding your data, that would be a good deal.
I was thinking about that D. I think you're also looking at, uh, but evaluate, um, yeah, smartphones and tablets, laptops. I think you could end it while they're out there. They don't do it on paper, take it back and, and.
And, yeah, you do it right there.
Do it right there.
It creates efficiencies. And we've been moving that way. Um, you know, as far as the technology, this is one where technology can get very costly. It, it gets outdated, it's always moving. Um, but if you don't keep up with it, um, you know, then everything is moving in that direction. So it is, it's one of those areas that it does take resources and it will, it's the way, um, through GIS and mapping. Um, we have a lot of data. Um, what we have been doing is when, you know, replacements come up on your schedule for technology, you know, and this is why we were prepared for COVID, um, a lot of desktop units, staff had already started migrating through just some wisdom to laptops or, or having those tablets. And so therefore they were to adapt. And so there are some ways that as we replace things, we replace them smarter, right, and doing things that are more, um, multifunctional and, um, become more effective, right? And, um, so the, and the other thing I want to say is the maintenance, the, uh, maintenance management system, that is something that's already in place. It was in the budget this year. So as we see that, so the efficiencies, uh, as well as you see this month, we've got the field tracking piece, which is another area that's, uh, an upgrade, so that's why that is there. And then, you know, our replacement for phone systems, I mean, I think we need to look at that. It was brought up. It was a good discussion item, not just to replace what we've got, but because of we all carry a smartphone, you know, maybe, maybe we just have to look at things a little bit differently with technology through our computer bandwidth. Um, now that we've got fiber coming here, other areas in the agency, um, it is challenging when you're remote. Um, we don't, you know, it depends on where you're located. Southeast of the county is a lot different than.
That's still down on your.
Yeah, by John.
Yeah, you're, uh, it's getting onto the district packet. Must be nice, a nice.
In Canada, it's strange. Sometimes we're sutter than, and where, and where's how areas is hard. So that's our technology. Um, so all these, as we start them, each year when we do our budget and what we're trying to align, you would see them again come into the budget, right? So they're not moving outside. If there's expenditure items, they would be benchmarked into the budget. So this was here. If there's no funding, then it's not going to move further than that, right? Um, and, and there could be things, um, that, that come up throughout the year, I guess, that aren't there. I want to try to keep to it so that this doesn't get unruly and growing. But the baseline of having the goals is when an initiative comes knocking on the door, we can measure, is it moving and, you know, because it may be another solution to something we thought about, but we really didn't know about that one, that will solve it and get us there too. And then we'll have to take something off or say, we haven't started this yet, but this one might be actually better. We just didn't know about it. It doesn't mean we're changing direction. It means we're still going that way. It's just, it may be more cost-effective, it may be a better solution to move this towards that. Right? So there, there, every year there's a little bit of adjustment times. We come back and we revisit this and then the board can say, okay, we haven't started these yet. We're not going to start this one. You know, so there's always room, right?
That's the D.
Things change. Anything that's not, um, additional costs or things, we'll be looking from here, um, to.
That's a full plate.
That is a full plate. Um, to think about it, obviously not to ask you to do anything more to approve it this month, but I'd like to in August to come back and to get the confirmation so that we, I mean, we're working towards these things, but to firm that up and as we're working towards the budget, right? I mean, so they don't.
We need to get it approved, so.
Yeah, August would be.
Are you guys okay with August? Okay. All right, then let's move on. Um, uh, Elizabeth, executive director's report.
Okay, let's see. What do I have? Um, we have, uh, I told you a little bit about Debrin. Um, the follow-up on, um, Boulder Ridge, which we'll talk about on Tuesday. Um, the tree is down and, um.
Thirty-five hundred books?
Yeah, and, and that went well. Um, you know, we'll work on the appropriate signage until we get the lease agreement, because that property is not accessible. It should not be, you know, it's not open to the public.
I was wondering, why did we ever, uh, have a, a use agreement with that site before? What was, I, I, it doesn't look like a good, there's a good pond on it?
Well, the, the, yeah, we'll go into the historical perspective on it.
I'll wait, I'll wait, I'll wait for Tuesday.
Um. Yes. Uh, yeah, so that, um, as far as, uh, you probably read, uh, with the COVID, uh, we now are in a, a separate additional regions were added. So Lake and McHenry County are deemed to be together, um, because we're associated with, with, with the north suburban area and so.
And colored Southern Illinois.
Yeah, so, so, um, which I think we've had some discussion. Uh, we've been doing very well. Um, and, uh, but, uh, the concern is that we'll get an uptick potentially and things may slide back. So everything that we've been doing, and kudos to our staff and, and board and everybody working together, is we sized it right, so we're able to slide and, and, and won't, it should adjust us to much of that was happening. We have it full in. We're still managing effectively, getting the work done. Obviously, with limited staff, not having seasonals this year is, is impacting, um, clearly, but we're, we're managing. So, um, staff are coming in our buildings like we're able to host tonight. Um, and so we'll be working to all that. So anyhow, that was, that was an update. Um, and, uh, there's a variety of different things we're working on. We did submit to the COVID grant, um, to get reimbursement. Uh, so, uh, John headed up and pulled all that together for us.
Thank you, John.
And submitted that. And, uh, and then we had to do some forecasting. Um, uh, there will be an article in IPB magazine that I wrote was asked to write, uh, on behalf of adaptation, uh, and how we handled under COVID. Um, and so we'll be doing that. Um, we'll try to get an award application in for our work, because we're pretty good at getting awards. And again, where the art team does an amazing job. Um, and so, uh, we'll see. But, 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 yeah, a lot going on still. So it's summer and, um, that's all I have.
Any questions? Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Uh, so now on other, I, I saw this, I've been seeing the, uh, monthly comp, comp time reports, um, and then Elizabeth this time said, is it still needed? I don't ever know why we need it, but is the board still request, would you still want to have that comp time report for all exempt staff? Is that something that you want to continue or what would you like to, that report you've put together already, or is this a version of what you do? I think something, something's going to happen somewhere.
It goes in our system. Um, the, it's, it's a, it's a management report. It's prepared, um, and it's for exempt staff only. Um, it's something that as, as our executive team, you know, we would take a look at and we would see, I guess I, it, it, it does take a little bit of time to prepare the report and to get it into the format that's presentable to, you know, uh, from that. I just, you know, it's, it's, it's been asked. I've been providing it.
How, how often do you, do you provide it? How often?
I was asked to provide it monthly.
So perhaps we don't need to see it monthly, maybe see it quarterly or semi-annually? I mean, I do think it's something that we should be aware of and unless it's presented to you, you, you tend to not be aware of it. But I don't know that we need to be aware of it monthly. And I, because I don't, um, understand all these things. What's the, what's in it, the adjustment category versus lost? When it gave hours across, there was a category called adjustment.
Right.
And then in a few instances, there was comp time lost.
I'd have to pull up the, a report, um, but I believe, and then Andy can correct me. So in what you're seeing is at the end of the month, um, or in the payroll period, which is a two-week payroll period, um, at any time, okay, you can't in your bank have greater than eighty hours of compensatory time, okay? That, that's the maximum. That's the, that's the, what I would say. If there was a separation with the district, that's your liability. So we cap it out. We don't allow many units of government that were carrying this at one point, didn't put caps on it, and then they ended up with this large payout. So we mitigated that. We don't do that. Then the loss though, if, let's say I'm at my capacity, you're going to end up, it goes into the loss because you're never going to be able, you can't put more in your bucket. Your bucket's full.
At eighty. Your bucket's full at eighty.
Well, maybe Andy can explain to me, and it doesn't have to be now, the difference, what is an adjustment, um, than a loss? Is it, is, how is that different than a loss? And obviously, if you take the comp time, then you use it. So I could, obviously, I can follow that, but I just wasn't sure what the distinction between adjustment and loss.
And, and part of that is in the report. I think we have to sit down and go through it to review the report, because there are adjustments that are made, you know, there's adjustments at the end of the year. So as an example, at the end of the fiscal year, um, that automatically whatever's there, it gets sliced in half. So you can't carry more than forty, right? If, you know, you automatically, we take back, um, just to start it again to rebalance it. And so there is adjustment, there's a, an accounting adjustment that's done in the system. But, but I would be happy to sit down and go through that. Um, again, it's, you know, the question to understand it. Um, it's a management tool. It, it gives information about the individual staff members. Um, is that something that in general, the board needs to have about the individual staff or not?
I have to say that I didn't pay much attention to any burn laws. So I didn't take it from, but I.
I read it all, every, I read it.
I read it from time to time, but I, I didn't concentrate on it. I mean, a lot of times when I'm on board, if I'm, I know another board, I'm just being careful. But I, um, I'm not here. So if we keep it going, I'd like to come on, see if they have, if it's necessary in the next half.
Sounds like a plan.
Oh, I'm happy to do that.
Sounds like a plan. Wendy, you good with that?
Maybe we'll have, we'll spend a little time with, with, with all of them.
Because if there was, you know, again, my father and I, I think that's a great approach, um, just to have a discussion of really, well, the question I always had is what are we trying to identify? What are we looking for in, in, and, and what is it helping to provide? I get uncomfortable because it's sharing information about our staff and, you know, how much vacation time, how much, they're all allotted, but you're getting a lot of different information that to me as a management that I don't know is general. It, it, it's just, that, that was my, you know, just in, in, from a staffing perspective.
And maybe it's something they need a summary of and not have to handle, I don't know.
Individually.
Because it, because it is, um, a liability financially somewhat that you hold on to people or whatever. Um, so maybe we, maybe we told a couple of ones, like I said, some will, some will reconsider it.
So this is July, August, September? Okay. Good. All right, then what else is on the agenda? Public comments number two. Anybody in the audience care to make a comment? Anybody at all? Steph, is anybody out there?
Nope, I don't see anything.
Okay, taken that as no, uh, then, uh, motion to go into executive session, if someone would be willing to.
I make a motion to go into executive session.
I'll second.
Oh, motion to go into executive session pursuant to exception two C one personnel, two C eleven pending litigation, and two C two one review of post-session minutes of the open act, open meetings act five, I L C S one twenty dash one.
Yeah.
Whatever that is.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
As long as I don't have to read any.
Yeah, right. And then we have to take a vote.
We have to take a roll. Tusty Cook.
Here.
Tusty Thomas, yes. Tusty Campbell, yes. Tusty Hennig, and Tusty Grant.
Yes.
We have a, most of the staff is unanimously.
Thank you.
So for everybody that's online and Zoom, um, we are going to be ending this part of the Zoom meeting. And, um, if you, there is no action planned after executive session, but we will come back on to fulfill, uh, to adjourn. Uh, and, uh, so if you wish to log back on, I don't have a time period for this. You're more than welcome to, to, uh, log back in and hang out in the, uh, meeting room, waiting room, and, um, and then we'll bring you back on. So thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Now, we should take a break.
It'll be fine if you'd like.
Are we not recording anymore?
No, right now it's recording. She has to go in and turn her off.